Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms, has the lobby been attended to?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I am pleased to welcome the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four school board meeting. The time is six P M. And this meeting is hereby called to order. Board member Morgan will be participating via Zoom pursuant to Board Policy zero one six four dot one. She is eligible to vote on items during tonight's action meeting. Can we confirm that we have Ms. Morgan on the line?
I am.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Hi.
We'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential and that the district's vision is to be a world-class school system. Tonight, this evening's agenda includes the invocation, the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance, public comment, consent action items, which include three items under Board Office, one item under Board Auditor, one item under Executive Services, five items under Academic Services, five, six items under Business Services, three items under Human Resources, one item under Information Systems, one item under Legal Services, six items under Operations, three items under Public Hearings, and four items under Good of the Order and Other Business. Board members, is our motion to approve tonight's agenda? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion. We approve tonight's agenda.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Move by Mr. Persons, second by Ms. Langford Fleming. Please record your vote. Ms. Morgan, are you able to vote? Ms. Morgan? Ms. Morgan, can you hear us?
Sam. I'm, I am, I'm not, I, I haven't set up to vote. I will in the future. Thank you.
Is that a guess? Yeah, what is your vote then? Aye. That's what it's about to say. Okay. Do we have the other votes in? Okay, motion carries seven zero then. As is the custom of the board, Ms. Juvenelli will introduce her guest for the invocation, after which Ms. Patrico will lead us in the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance. Please stand, everyone.
Pastor Quay Crenshaw is the husband of Lisa Crenshaw and the father of Jaylen, Kyrie, and Niamh. Born and raised in Lake Placid, Florida, Pastor Crenshaw moved to Fort Myers in two thousand and six. He graduated with a degree in accounting and became a business owner until God called him to a full-time ministry in two thousand and nineteen. Pastor Crenshaw has been on staff at Next Level Church for six years yesterday. After a successful launch of a, a part of the Cape Coral staff, he became the pastor of the downtown location in two thousand and twenty-one. The downtown location officially launches on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and he is excited to see all that God does throughout the community. Welcome, Patrick, Pastor Crenshaw.
Thank you all. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited for our downtown location to launch, as Ms. Melissa said, on October the thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-four, to make an incredible kingdom impact downtown. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you today, Lord, just so grateful, so thankful for who you are. God, I pray, God, as we spend moments today, Father God, that we will keep every child, every teacher, every faculty in mind. Lord, will we come together, God, in unity, God, to find the, the right procedures, the right outcome, God, that will create an incredible future, God, for our, our future makers, Lord, the, the children, the students. Lord God, we pray, God, over safety and unity, God, as we discuss today of what it, it, what it holds for the remainder of the school year and into the future. Lord, will we come together in all kindness, in unity, God, and laughter and happiness? Father God, that there will be just an incredible togetherness, God, as we plan for what the, the future of tomorrow looks like. Lord, we pray, God, of safety over tonight, God, over every school in the county. Father God, that you would just continue to go before each and every one of them. Lord, we pray that each, each one of our teachers, God, will feel loved, that they will feel supported, that the community will feel heard, that they will feel loved, and that they will feel supported as well. God, we give it all over to you. Lord, may you make a way tonight that will create an incredible opportunity for so many in the future. Lord, we give it to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is Master Sergeant Retired William Jones, Army Instructor at South Fort Myers, South Fort Myers High School. Master Sergeant Jones retired after twenty-four years of active duty service and is a veteran of Operation Enduring Freedom. This is his third year as a J R O T C instructor in the district. Thank you, sir, for your service to our great nation.
Thank you. I have to excuse my voice. I've been instructing students all day. Excuse me. Thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Jose Baudal, the Cadet Commander of the South Fort Myers High School J R O T C Brigade. Cadet Baudal is also the commander of the J R O T C Drill and Exhibition Team. Outside of J R O T C, he is a member of the Varsity Wrestling and Cross Country Team, a member of the National Honor Society, and the Senior Class President for the Student Government Association. He is currently applying to the Naval Academy and plans to pursue a career as a naval aviator. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is item E, public comment. Attorney DeBree Bruno, can you please address the item of public comment?
Thank you and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent or the board attorney may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy zero one six nine point one and may be removed from the chambers by the Sergeant at Arms. Per Board Policy zero one six nine point one, the time for speakers, three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty, and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and I will call your names five speakers at a time. Mr. Chairman, there are eleven individuals that wish to address the board this evening.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Please ensure you have completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but has not filled out a public comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay. I'm seeing none, so at this point, Attorney DeBree Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman. Coila James, Melissa Joyce, Anthony Call, Dr. Paula Porter, Leanne Leo Bera, please line up.
Good evening. I am a school bus driver, and I'm addressing the, the race that you guys are deciding for us. My name is Gaila James. I am a school bus driver. I have been a bus driver for Lee County School District for thirty-four years. I love my job. I love the kids on my bus. When the parents release them to me, I treat them as my own. But I have many concerns, but time won't allow me to address them all. Low wages make it difficult to recruit and retain school bus drivers. I seen bus drivers go and come like a revolving door because they can't afford to pay their bills on the bus driver's salary. The shortage of school bus drivers is a severe problem that impacts the welfare and success of our students. When you have school bus drivers doubling and sometimes tripling routes this year and getting to the school late, it impacts their grades, especially during testing time. Yes, we make it happen, but it's not fair to the overworked drivers. Me, as a bus driver, feels unappreciated, almost like we don't deserve a pay raise. We are the first person the kids see in the morning. Sometimes we are counselors when they're having problems at home. Sometime we are nurses when their nose is bleeding on the bus and they're vomiting, which I had to do last week. Sometimes we are parents. I'm not counting the irate drivers that get mad at us because we have to stop and pick up the kids. Not counting the crazy drivers on the road that we have to watch out for a while getting the kids to and from school safely. Without the bus drivers bringing the kids to school, the teachers wouldn't have anyone to teach. Uh, custodians don't have anyone to clean after. The cafeteria won't have nobody to feed. I feel like we are a part of the foundation of every school system, but treated unfairly because it comes to the pay raise. I hope you consider all that we do when you decide on our pay raise that we are requesting. Thank you.
Next speaker can come down.
My name is Melissa Joyce. I have been with the district for almost five years as an E S E para. After many years in the retail field, I wanted to make a difference in the lives of children. So I decided to make the change, knowing there will be drastic pay cut, um, issues. While myself and thousands of others make a difference every day in the lives of children, it is very disheartening that we can go to work at a fast food place, McDonald's, Burger King, et cetera, and we, and make more money. But more importantly, we continue our work for the children. It doesn't make sense, but the board can make it make sense and fair by increasing wages to a livable wage for all the support staff. We are a vital part of the school district, I feel, and sometimes it's noticed, sometimes it's not. But, um, with the, uh, like I said, with a livable wage, it would make the world of difference for many people, including the children. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Anthony Call. I seen you a couple weeks ago. Um, just to reiterate on what Gail says, um, last night I spent in the hospital because of overworking my foot and I hurt something, so now I spend two days off of work. Um, we're on the buses so much that people don't understand. I mean, I'm still doing five routes in the morning and five routes in the afternoon just to make sure the kids get home. Loving kids, loving parents. Uh, when I have to sub a route, the parents that remember me come up and say, oh, we wish you were back here. I wish I was. But I'm not, I'm still not understanding why, when we're clocking in, that we're having to chase our money, why they're changing our R T Ms every day. They're pulling stops from us and think that that's helping, but it's not because we're still running the same amount of time because of the way that it's set up. They don't, the program doesn't accept traffic lights, traffic, or anything. So the problem we're having is, is drivers are quitting because they're seeing their money being taken away and they don't understand why. Because when they pull a, a stop off or something, it shortens our route time, and then we get paid less. When we came here, we were told, you, when I first came here, we were told, you bid on a route, that's your route, that's your R T M, your route time. Now we're told, it doesn't matter what you bid on, the kids that you want to take care of, now you're just bidding on your time. And now that this year we're bidding on our time, they're taking it away from us. And we're, we're not understanding. And, and a lot of my coworkers at West are coming to me because they don't think they can come to the board because of their Spanish, that they won't be able to let you know with their broken English. But they're having problems too. We all are. And if it wasn't for my wife making the money that she makes, trust me when I tell you I'd be homeless, like some drivers we still have that are homeless and can't find a home. There's no way I can afford a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment, raising two kids like some of the women that work for the, the bus barn do. Because at eighteen hundred dollars a month for rent and then utilities and making sure they have clothes and supplies for school, we, we can't do it. We're, we're, we're hurting. And when we listen to the budget meetings, we, we can't understand why. And the other thing I can't understand is our insurance. Why is it when I go to have an M R I, if I pay cash up, I'm paying three hundred dollars, but when I use our insurance, I'm having to pay five hundred dollars? We're, we're not understanding. We feel like every, every time we get a raise, we're losing some, something. And a lot of the drivers that I know that have retired, they're, they're done. I know at least ten drivers that are retiring at the end of this year or quitting at the end of the year because they just want out. We can't afford to lose our older drivers. I've only been here four years, but like Gail and them that have been here thirty-four years and up and even higher than me, they do deserve it. They do.
Thank you for speaking, sir. Your time is up.
Will the following individuals please line up? Chelsea Boyle, Justin Ward, Marge Cox, Michael Andosia, Dr. Amy Perwin, Sergio Cruz.
Dr. Paula Porter, Lehi Akers. While the Civil Rights and Equity Guide are being voted on later tonight, I have some questions that were never answered. The last board meeting, I indicated that your Equity and Diversity Committee should have the opportunity to review this document following Board Policy ninety-one forty. At that meeting, Attorney Bruno Dupé indicated that the original was completed in two thousand and twenty-two in cooperation with parents, teachers, students, and the community. However, when I reviewed the E D A C meeting minutes from two hu, two thousand and twenty-one forward, I did not see any indication this document came before the committee. Something else came to light in my investigation. It was mentioned in the board minutes that the guide was published in the newspaper on August twenty-first. That same day, the board just voted to suspend E D A C until January two thousand and twenty-five, even though the first meeting had already been scheduled for September ninth. Looking again at the timing, the first reading of the Civil Rights and Equity Guide, it was September fifth. There was no second read, there's been no second reading, and it's going to be up for approval tonight. Back on the fifth, again, I asked why this guide couldn't be reviewed by E D A C. Why rush this policy? Why did you shut down E D A C when you knew this policy was out there? Why ignore E D A C, which the ninety-one forty indicates adherence of board policy concerning equity and diversity? That's their advisory position. Why have an E D A C if you're not going to use them for advice? I went through this guide several times, and there's one area that I'm going to speak up tonight, and that was in the classroom office spaces and personal items, where an information on discussion or displays of controversial topics were pointed out. What does that have to do with classroom office spaces? It, it discussion is not the space. Um, so, and they also indicate twenty-two forty. I went back and read twenty-two forty again several times, and there was an interesting part. Twenty-two port forty says, on controversial in, in, issues, the board will permit the introduction of proper education use of controversial issues provided their use in the instructional program. C does not indoctrinate or persuade students to a particular point of view. And D encourages open mindfulness and conduct it in the inquiry of academic and scholarly inquiry. So to bring up one of the things that we discussed last week, I have to address how the hate has no home flag is indoctrination or closed-minded or demonstrates any indication of ignorance of race, color, nationality, et cetera. Thank you.
I'm Chelsea Boyle. He needs to follow the directions of the adult in the room and take a moment and think about those words because they are dangerous and they are powerful words. As a parent, I understand the meaning of those words and with much respect to the district, to keep an orderly learning environment in our schools. Unfortunately, I also understand that telling children to blindly follow the instructions of the adult in their room is akin to setting children up for being groomed, to keeping secrets, and to blindly accept whatever that adult tells children to do. What if that adult in the room is wrong? What then? On Friday at Gulf Middle School, my son was wrongly accused and humiliated in front of his peers because a teacher mistook him for a different child. Having done nothing wrong, my son was the one who received a referral from Emma Winfield prior to receiving his due process in a violation of his student rights. He told the truth. The documented reason for that referral is he needs to follow the directions of the adult in the room. Yesterday, after speaking with Principal Moreland and reading to him this board's policies and procedures, do you know what he said? He said, I don't care if he was telling the truth or not. I don't care if he didn't do anything wrong. I have dealt with too many students in the past that lie and play games. This is not one of those instances. My children are respectful and know right from wrong. They take accountability for their actions. Is a child supposed to do whatever the adult in the room tells them to do, even when they know that that adult is wrong? What if that adult is physically abusing a child? Because my son in third grade was physically abused by a teacher over and over again, and he took that abuse because she was the adult in the room. And this is the reason that parents like myself are done telling children to have absolute faith in adults. This is not a case of a poorly behaved child. This is a case of poorly behaved adults that haven't taken account, accountability for their actions, and the only one that suffers is my child. I would like my son's record expunged. He sees the referral every time he opens the laptop, every class, every assignment, several times a day, and he knows he doesn't deserve it. It is not right. It is not just. This district has the resources to protect themselves. The teachers and admin have the district and the unions to protect them, and the children, they have their parents. They have you, this elected school board, to protect them and advocate them. I want you to advocate for my child and for the attorneys in the room. I don't know if I need to point out that following the directions in the room can set the district up for exposing themselves to liability and jeopardize the district's pending current and future litigation. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm here to represent the adults in the room. My name is Leanne Leo Bera, and I'm here to speak on my experience as a paraprofessional. Imagine for a moment your coworkers approaching you on a daily basis, commenting, I don't know how you do it. You do amazing work. You don't, they don't pay you enough. You deserve to be paid more, or you're an integral part to this community. Now imagine seeing those same peers as they watch you block yourself from other students, throwing dirty diapers, rocks, trash, chairs, and food at you and students. What is meant to be kind words and praise become burning statements, pity, almost condescending, almost demeaning. A student with violent behaviors has you saying to yourself, I don't get paid enough for this. Yet, you keep. for this, yet you keep your head up high because you know I am meant to do this. I am not transient. I am not uneducated. I am not replaceable. The relationships I cultivate with my students, teachers and administrators are one of the most, my greatest accomplishments. My job is not easy, yet bearing the mental and physical load is not enough. My take-home pay equates to less than four hundred dollars a week, sixteen hundred dollars a month. At a national conference by the NEA for Educational Support Professionals, their slogan for the national conference states, one job should be enough. This job isn't enough. The career of a paraprofessional is not designed to be sustainable. The work, the expectations, the pay, the end goal of a paraprofessional should not have to become a teacher. I believe us to be the nurses to our doctors. As there is a skillset that many of those in my role share, we see to our students' physical, emotional and academic needs. Our relationships with our students allow us to see things teachers may not because there are some things assessments cannot shed light upon. We deserve the compensation that our work calls for, the dignity associated with a worthy job that allows us to provide for ourselves and our families. The trajectory of education is changing. We know that we are a critical asset to this industry that continuously leaves us behind. You chose your role as the future of this education system. We recognize you. It is time you recognize us for our integral roles that we play, the compensation we deserve, the dignity and recognition that we too have an impact on the future of education.
Mike Landosha, Fort Myers, former Lee County school teacher. Every member of this board was elected to deal with real problems, improving academic achievement, promoting critical thinking and creative thinking skills, dealing with the teacher shortage. So it baffles me that instead many members of the board have decided that their focus should be in dehumanizing our gender non-conforming students and reducing them to second-class citizenship. And toward that end, making sure that teachers who oppose the medieval goals are silenced. Let's be clear that this is the common theme on every change and on any, on every change proposed in the Civil Rights and Equity Guide. Delete every reference to gender and put academic shackles on our teachers for advocating for them. This isn't about being value neutral because nobody knows what that means. It's about erasing pride flags and thus erasing gender realities that make a small minority of our citizens uncomfortable. And what do we know about the consequences of such policies? We know that when we target and stigmatize our gender non-conforming youth, we increase their likelihood of suicide. Trans youths are four times more likely to commit suicide than their cisgendered peers. We increase their rates of mental health disorders, they're twice as likely to experience depression. We reduce their academic potential. And yet we know that when a trans youth finds acceptance from just one adult, we reduce their likelihood of committing suicide by thirty to forty percent. In other words, we're willingly harming our trans and gender non-conforming youth by trying to erase them from our attention. So if you want to pursue these changes to the so-called Civil Rights and Equity Guide, then you're going to have to modify another policy. According to Lee County Schools Standards of Ethical Conduct, our first obligation to our students is, and I quote, "Students are protected from conditions harmful to learning and/or to the student's mental and/or physical health and/or safety." You can change one, you can't change one document without changing the other. If you're on the board are satisfied with your, with your eth- uh, I'm sorry. If you on the board are to satisfy your ethical requirements, you can't erase gender from our concept of civil rights. You're not silencing teachers from supporting these rights. Furthermore, this is kind of an unforced error. Why are we even debating this? This Equity Florida has already come to terms with the state of Florida in clarifying the rules that we're trying to deal with here.
Hello, I'm Marge Cox. I live in Benita Springs. I, I love that we start every meeting with saying what the goal of the district is and what the, what you want for each student. And I, I treasure that that's brought before every meeting. What concerns me is what happens on a day-to-day basis. And so I just would like to, to remind the board as they are voting tonight that if we're going to make those goals happen, we have to accept every child, regardless of whether we personally agree with a decision they've made or not. We need to accept them, treasure them, educate them, to help them to be the person that they can be, given the choices they have.
Good evening. My name is Justin Ward. I'm a teacher at Riverdale High School. I'm speaking on the Civil and Equity Guide's new policies. I want to start by branching off one of the issues discussed last week, mental health and suicide rates. Every year, one point eight million LGBTQ members between the age of thirteen and twenty-four have seriously considered suicide and there's at least one suicide attempt every forty-five seconds. Over eighty-seven percent of LGBTQ students have been bullied at some point in their lifetime. We had a board member at the last board meeting bring up a very sad case that affected our students in the area, and I'm so sorry for the loss and the pain felt. We had people on the board also talk about how we need to create a more inclusive welcoming environment for all our students to help combat suicides, bullying and school shootings. I don't understand how it's possible to sit, sit up there and talk about these importance while trying to pass policy for our district that very much presents harm and increased risk to these already perilous statistics for the LGBTQ youth. If a student comes to me and says he's dating a girl, cool, I don't have to say anything. A student comes to me and says that he's dating a guy and I'm supposed to redirect him to the counselor who will have to inform his parents due to mental illness. How is this equity? These policies that are being voted on tonight are further harming an already marginalized group. I personally have lost friends to suicide due to bullying and not feel like they have a safe space. Hearing these comments while seeing the policies that affect marginalized youth is difficult to grapple with. From my understanding, at the last board meeting, this was supposed to be, had to a second reading and now it's going to vote to enforce it? Being elected officials, it's discouraging that these decisions were made in the best interest for the public and students while behind closed doors with no regard for transparency or the decorum you asked for at the meeting. It was brought up at the last meeting by members on the board. Uh, there isn't a lot of public discussion going on with very important issues. I feel, uh, and I feel seeing how you got to some of these solutions or wordings would help make these connections. For District's motto is personal, passionate, progressive, nothing you're doing today on the, on, on this is that. How is it being personal to take away teachers' room decorations to give their rooms a personal touch? How is it passionate when you're turning a blind eye to actual issues in classrooms to focus on politics and not why many high school students can't read? How is it progressive to stomp all over my representation of those in the LGBTQ community as this policy mainly targets? It feels almost like these goals aren't to focus on the well-being and success of all students, the well-being success of, for some students. This may single out many who feel isolated and adversely impact mental health. I have a decoration in my classroom that states hate has no home here, uh, with inclusive hearts that include the American flag in the very center of it. Um, even though it has been taken down multiple times before this policy was even voted on and went right back up. My time in the Air Force taught me to stand up for those with less of a voice. I'm living up to the district's motto and think the district should participate in leading by example. Thank you. And one last thing, uh, for my, uh, school bus drivers, I can't imagine the job that you guys have. I want to thank you guys. It's ridiculous the stuff, uh, you guys do and have to put up with. And I, I did have a student come and talk to me and say that they, um, weren't allowed to get on the bus because there wasn't enough room for them. And so they had to figure out a ride home. So there is quite a few issues in this district going on right now that is bigger than having a rainbow in a classroom. And I think those need to be sho- uh, focused on.
Good evening. My name is Sergio Cruz and I'm a parent advocate and a dad on a mission. Um, as always, I find it a blessing to have the ability and time to come before you guys tonight and voice my concerns, comments, questions or sometimes grievances. As always, I look to utilize a collaborative approach when dealing with the district and the board. As I've advocated for my son and other students with disabilities, I have came across policies or procedures that weren't either aligned with the state standard or at the very least it may not have been in the best interest of the students. So I not only tried to advocate on my son's behalf, but also systematically for all students within the district with disabilities. With that being said, along that journey, I've been blessed with the opportunities to intend, engage, join or lead various committees within the district or my son's school. And as you know, I've come across the board many times about various topics impacting students with disabilities and I've had many sit downs with various department heads, et cetera, which all had some form of return on investment. If anything, rose rapport building. Um, but some of the most impactful changes I've been able to be a part of happened when I was the SAC president at my son's Okamic Middle School. Uh, the reason I bring that up is because this is where I found, I, I believe, uh, another gap that we can bridge. Um, I started to realize very quickly that the committee was not comprised of the genuine stakeholders that it should be comprised of. Um, and I had to let the whole school year go by and did my own kind of informal investigation of speaking with other SAC presidents, members who have been part of the SAC over the several years to kind of get their, you know, get the real as far as who was attending these meetings, um, how, you know, how impactful they are. Um, this committee is different from a PTA. Um, it's more purposeful, it has intent. This committee is specifically tasked to help draft the school improvement plan, which has huge implications for each school as far as their school priorities and kind of how they move forward each year. Um, and it's, you know, so when I started to look around and realize that, uh, the makeup of our school wasn't represented, um, because I'm always looking at, is there a, you know, a, somebody representing the disco community, the disability community? That was obviously not the case. Um, there, but it, it goes beyond that. And, you know, at a Title I school, uh, these statutes and policies that were put into place to assure that these voices would be heard, um, I, I think, uh, I started, when I started to look into it, I wanted to find out where was the fail safe? Where was the checks and balances? If this was the intent of the statute, how could this continuously go year from year? And this is from administrator staff, members of these board, of these meetings. Um, how can it continuously go forward? Well, the fail safe was it's the school board. So I brought that up, got twenty seconds, but this time, around this time each, each year, I think before October, you guys are going to get those sips across your desk. Um, I, I encourage you to thoroughly investigate or thoroughly look into the members of those, um, school SAC members because I think it could, uh, open up to legal situations.
Thank you for speaking.
Dr. Amy Perwin, good evening, board. I reviewed the Lee County School District's Civil Rights and Equity Guide and I'd like to share my perspective as a parent. The very beginning of the guide states the following, quote, "The school board of Lee County, Florida, does not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination." This statement is followed by a list of categories. The first category is race and includes antisemitism. Although I understand why antisemitism is included, it should not be part of the race Jews include individuals of diverse origins and appearances, making the idea that Jews could be easily designated as a race implausible. Further, Hitler viewed Jews as racially inferior and used this as a justification to exterminate millions of Jews. Modern antisemitism continues to root itself in the claim that Jews are racially distinct. This district should have no part in continuing this dangerous narrative. In the section on classroom and office spaces, the board has the opportunity to support teachers in their efforts to create welcoming environments for their students. Students who feel included and protected are more able to learn. I encourage the board to clearly state that safe space stickers and similar displays of inclusivity are permitted in classrooms based on the recent settlement between Equality Florida and the Florida Department of Education. By being specific, the board can reduce the climate of fear that has permeated our public schools in recent years. Some of the sections in the guide appear to have been written to address recent legislation, but it's important that the district not go beyond what is in state statute. For example, statute one thousand point oh seven one does not mention anything about the use of legal names. Therefore, it is unnecessary and a district overreach for teachers to be solely addressed by their legal names. Requiring the sole use of legal names is in opposition with First Amendment rights and validates a person's identity and creates a potentially hostile environment. There are other examples in this guide that are problematic. I strongly encourage the board to examine areas where the guide potentially invalidates students' identities or discriminates. For example, bathroom facilities should be available to all students. Single-user facilities should be available to students without requiring special permission on a, quote, "case-by-case" basis. As a district, you have created a Civil Rights and Equity Guide. Now is the time to make sure this guide lives up to its name by providing equal protection to all. Thank you.
That concludes public comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Uh, Dr. Savage and Attorney, Bree Bruno, is there anything you'd like to address regarding public comment tonight?
I do not.
Uh, I think I would like to address a few of the topics, uh, since we did have a number of speakers and there were some grouped, uh, themes accordingly. Uh, so just first and foremost, there are a number of speakers who spoke around the compensation, uh, whether it's bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and I, one, one particular message I think really focused on the word dignity, uh, and the, the, that aspect of that contribution to our students. So, you know, that's a very powerful sentiment that I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that it's, it's received, it's heard. Uh, certainly when we talk about, uh, the, the very difficult work ahead in terms of compensation, how we're working to compensate our employees, I think it's just essential that our staff understands that we take that very, very seriously. We recognize that, uh, one of the challenges we have in a growing district and also the rise in cost of living and so forth is to balance our considerable, um, budgeted funds to try to make sure that we're creating dignity for not just our students every day, but also for our, our workforce. And that is a real challenge, uh, when we have lots of constraints acting upon our budget, but it's something that our group is digging into very deeply and trying to make it a data-informed conversation. Uh, so just really appreciate the folks that came out today to, to speak to that effect. Uh, just wanted them to know that their voices are heard, certainly the board members have heard it and we'll continue to try to put work on, in this effort so that, uh, our employees and we'll continue to constantly make it the best we can, not just that, that may, having basic needs met, but also to create a valuable proposition for each of our employees each day. Uh, that said, um, moving on to the non, uh, wage level concerns, uh, there was a mention about the AM and PM, the RTMs, not just for compensation, but just the nature of what they are and issues about those. For RTMs, uh, for board members, when you hear that, that's referring to route time mileage. Uh, so that's a specific method of how we try to calculate and compensate bus drivers. And so I'll make sure that we can provide some additional information to the board just to understand what are any challenges of that implementation that, uh, it kind of came through the one particular comment today related to, I'm being paid for, you know, our time, not the, the RTM and so forth. So we'll try to create a distinction for that. There were a number of comments that were made on the Civil Rights and Equity Guide today, uh, in terms of a number of different questions related to that. And again, I would just kind of reiterate that again, our goal in, in all this work is to create a neutral environment for our, uh, our, all of our students. We recognize that our employees have individual viewpoints, that folks have different ideas, uh, things that are powerful symbols and so forth for folks, but for us, you know, obviously the priority to serve our entire community is to try to allow the, the standards that we teach, our compulsory education services that we are obligated to provide, uh, to find a way to do it in such a way that all of our students can come to learn and that we aren't adding to any type of divisiveness or anything along those lines, knowing that many of these issues are very passionate, we value all students. Um, and we also value our teachers and their individual viewpoints, but we try to create as a, as a governmental employer, we also try to create an opportunity for all of our students and their families to feel comfortable sending their students to work, uh, to our schools each day, for our employees to work in those environments and for us to really be able to focus on our core mission, which is to educate each and every student to their highest personal potential. And that's something we, we will not stop doing, uh, but obviously it's a challenge and I think with the Civil Rights and Equity Guide, you see our best attempt to try to stay in line with the laws of our land. I would also encourage that folks, you know, um, anytime they have issues from a policy standpoint, uh, that are passed by governmental entities, that those things reflect usually the voters' will. And so I would just say you continue to be active members of our, of our democracy and so forth. Just recognize also that that is, that is a critical way, voting different elected bodies, whether they're legislators, whether they're school board members, whether they're elected superintendents, any of the, the positions that you choose to vote for, that those things are often reflective of the different policies and so forth that are set as government attempts to balance all of those aspects. And so we just encourage that reminder of active, um, uh, being a participant in government and that those are things available to everyone. Uh, last but not least, I just wanted to mention about the two, actually one, one distinction I forgot to mention in the Equity Guide was we will certainly have staff review the distinction between Judaism, uh, contrasted within any type of ethnic or race-based references so that there is, that is carefully considered as well. Uh, and last but not least, rather, the SAC committees that were referenced by one of the, the comments, we will definitely have our staff provide, uh, to the board, uh, the conclusion of this week, what is that process by which, uh, those, you know, just to familiarize everyone with how those SACs are comprised, it's based on a role-specific as well as, um, race, ethnicity, uh, components to that piece, but not just what it's supposed to be, but also within what does that oversight process look like, uh, as schools do develop those SACs, which are a requirement, uh, for us to, to implement. So I'll make sure we, we address that as our. a requirement for us to implement. So I'll make sure we address that. If there's anything that I left out that the board would wish for me to address, I'm happy to do that at this time.
Ms. Patrica?
Actually, I think it's more for Attorney DePree Bruno. If you could address the hearings, number of hearings needed, because that came up a couple of times, that tonight isn't considered a hearing, or we didn't have enough hearings. If you could just address the steps needed. Thank you.
So the formal, formal rulemaking process based on Chapter 120 requires rules to go through within 28 days. There is a first reading and a second reading slash public hearing. This evening, the policies that are on the public hearing, this is the second reading. Sometimes the board will pre-brief something, but that is not part of the formal rulemaking process. And then, since Dr. Savage also brought this up with regards to the antisemitism, the language in that policy comes directly from Florida Statute 1,000.05, which specifically, and I'll just read it to you, "A public K through 20 educational institution must treat discrimination by students or employees or resulting from institutional policies motivated by antisemitic intent in an identical manner to discrimination motivated by race." So the model policy includes that distinction in there. So that comes from the statute.
Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno, as well as thank you, Dr. Savage. Want to thank everyone for their feedback. We truly appreciate it. And thank you to our staff for their tireless advocacy for our students. So at this point, we're going to move on to Consent Agenda. Next is Approval of Action Items under the Consent Agenda. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion, starting with Ms. Juvenelli?
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Mr. Persons?
I have none.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Board, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda consent action items? Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Mr. Persons. Please record your vote. Motion carries 7-0. And just to confirm, we have no administrators in attendance tonight. Correct, Dr. Savage?
That is correct. Chairman Fisher.
Okay. We're going to move on to item S, Public Hearings. Dr. Savage, please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Yes, sir. First is the approval to adopt the revised board policies and compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt the best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024. The approval to adopt new board policies and compliance with changes in related rules and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability, effective date of this second adoption would be 2024, September 18th, 2024. And then the third item is to approve to adopt the School District of Lee County Civil Rights and Equity Guide in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 8th, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. We'll now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. The said time is 6:50 p.m. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider Dr. Savage's recommendations previously stated. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these three items. The time allotted for each public, for public comment is three minutes. Number one, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the approval to adopt revised board policies and compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability? The effective date of this adoption will be September 18th, 2024. We'll address the policies by chapter. First is Chapter 000, Bylaws. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the bylaws? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to Chapter 1,000, Administration. Anyone wishing to address the administrative policy changes? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Chapter 2,000, which will be Program. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the program policies? Okay. Seeing none. Next up, Chapter 3,000, Instructional Staff. Anyone wishing to address the instructional staff policy changes? Seeing none. Moving on to Chapter 4,000, Support Staff Policies. Anyone wishing to address the support staff policies? Seeing none. Chapter 5,000, Students. Anyone wishing to address the changes to the student policies? Seeing none. Chapter 6,000, Finances. Anyone wishing to address, Chapter 6,000, Finance Policies? Seeing none. Chapter 7,000, Property Policies. Anyone in the audience wishing to address said policies? Seeing none. Chapter 8,000, Operations. Anyone in the crowd wishing to address Chapter 8,000, Operations Policies? Seeing none. Chapter 9,000, Community Relations. Anyone wishing to address the Community Relations Policies? Seeing none. And we'll move on to number two. Is there any in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the approval to adopt new board policies and compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability? The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024. The new policies are policy year of service defined, as well as policy for qualifications for full-time teachers of career programs. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address either of those said policies? Seeing none. Okay. Item number three, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the approval to adopt the School District of Lee County Civil Rights and Equity Guide in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability? The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024. Is there anyone wishing to address this policy? If you can please approach, make sure to state your name. Thank you.
Dr. Paula Porter, I respectfully request that you put this policy on hold until the EDAC Committee following Board Policy 9140 has a chance to review it, which, to my understanding, they have never had a chance to review this. They are your advisory board. They're there to help you. You have assigned people to take that responsibility as their civil duty, and you are ignoring your own policies. Thank you.
Next up?
Good evening. Thank you all for the forum to be heard. Firstly, I'd like to express my agreeance with Dr. Paula Porter in the myopia in not allowing the committee created to address these issues to address them. That's very frankly, short-sighted and irresponsible of the board at best. Secondly, I'd like to address that all of the responses to the public pushback on the Equity Guide addressed everything but the protected group that everyone came through to advocate to address. Please consider this when making your votes accordingly. Thank you.
Please approach. Oh, sorry. I thought you were speaking. My apologies, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the Civil Rights and Equities Guide? Please approach and state your name.
Amy Perwin. I was actually trying to look at the statute that has the antisemitism and race, and I just wanted to clarify kind of my comment. It actually has to do with how it's written in the policy. Right now, it says "race," and then in parentheses, it says "antisemitism." So then that looks like it's a definition or a part of. So it's actually a pretty simple, easy change. And I really encourage you to do that, because how I read it, it looked like antisemitism or being Jewish is included in the race category. So it's just probably punctuation, reorganizing of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment on the guide? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of September 17th, 2024. The time is 6:55 p.m. Dr. Savage, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing items, one at a time.
Yes, Chairman. First recommendation, to approval to adopt revised board policies and compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to adopt the revised board policies and compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024. Pursuant to Board Bylaw 0131, an extraordinary vote of the board, one more than a majority, shall be required to make exceptions, amendments, or additions to or delete board policies. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion. We approve the superintendent's recommendation for number one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Langford Fleming. Board, do we have any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, at this point, please move on and record your vote. Oh, roll call. My apologies, sir. Let's do it this way. Please signify your vote by saying aye or nay. Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
And I am an aye. Motion carries 6-1. Okay. We're now going to move on to item number two. Dr. Savage, if you could read your recommendation.
Yes, Chairman. This is the approval to adopt new board policies and compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024.
Thank you. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to adopt the new policies and compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion. We approve the superintendent's number two recommendation.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Any board discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to do a roll call vote again. Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries 7-0. Please proceed with item number three, Dr. Savage.
Yes, Chairman. The third recommendation is the approval to adopt the revised School District of Lee County Civil Rights and Equity Guide in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to adopt the revised School District of Lee County Civil Rights and Equity Guide in compliances with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 18th, 2024. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion. We approve the superintendent's recommendation for item number three, the School District of Lee County Civil Rights and Equity Guide revised.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Langford Fleming. Board members, discussion? Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to talk about the fact that it hasn't gone in front of EDAC, and I don't, I don't know who's privy to the fact that we are, in fact, ignoring our policies, but we did in a very deliberate way by putting all of our advisory committees, with the exception of DAC, which is statuteually required.
Microphone?
Microphone.
It is on. It's on. I can't believe, I'm not loud enough. I just wanted to point out that we are suspending the meeting of all of our advisory committees so that the new board can have an opportunity to determine which advisory committee should continue. Perhaps we will eliminate some and create new ones. Perhaps we'll create more. It won't be we, it will be the new board. So I just, I just wanted the public to be aware of the fact that, yes, we are ignoring our policies, but we're doing it very deliberately. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Any other board comments? Ms. Jordan?
I know I've spoken so much about this guide to the, I guess I'm sick in my stomach. And I've also, just listening to Dr. Savage tonight, and I, and I apologize if I misunderstood what you said about the politics, bringing that into this ream. It should not ever be about politics. It should be about us making sure that we are taking care of each and every single child, everyone, and our teachers and everyone. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I still believe that, and then I really wanted to get clarification on some things, which I know that you and I have already had a conversation with that, because that was not going to be permitted for me to have those conversations. And I just, because of that, I believe this needs to stay a guide, because that's what it says. It's a guide. And I cannot vote on this.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, we're going to move again to roll call vote, signifying aye or nay. We're going to start with Ms. Juvenelli.
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
And I am an aye. Motion carries 5-2. Moving on, we're going to go to Good of the Order. So I am going to start with Ms. Morgan, if you're all right with that.
I have nothing for Good of the Order this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Next up would be Ms. Langford Fleming.
I have nothing other than to wish Logan a happy 15th birthday.
Thank you.
It's a big one.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. Mr. Persons?
Just looking forward to Friday. It's at Bay Shore, Bay Shore School now, because it's a, eight, Donuts and Dad's. And I'm a granddad. So I get to go have donuts with my grandson at the school. It's one of the many things they do there at that school. It makes us special. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking tonight. And the bus drivers, thank you. The parents, thank you. You're very important to all of us. So we do see you, we do hear you. And again, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. What the audience watching from home didn't see was Dr. Savage's staff jumped to their feet and go to the, to provide assistance to the parent that came and spoke to us today so emotionally about the situation that her student, her child, is facing. So thank you. I mean, you guys do it every time somebody comes. And you, I don't think you addressed it, because you didn't have to, because you saw your staff do what they do so well. That's the first thing. The second thing is, in terms of the composition of SAC, I know that there are community components, there are professional components, there are racial and ethnic components. And I have been witness to, at several of our schools, principals doing their absolute best to fulfill those requirements. And I say "requirements" in quotes, because you can't, it's not, it's not a hard requirement. If you don't have someone in your community that's willing to serve, that fits one of those categories, there's nothing you can do. You're not going to suspend your SAC because you don't have someone that fits one of those descriptions. So I have been witness to our principals doing their absolute best, in some cases, recruiting people who will fit those descriptions in order to be able to fulfill the requirements of the law to the greatest extent possible. But you just, you can't always do it. So I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Juvenelli?
As September is being National Suicide Month, I stand here, or I sit here before you, actually, to address the topic that has been the cause of this, of certain, of concern for many of us. The issue of bullying. Bullying is a problem that affects individuals The issue of bullying, bullying is a problem that affects individuals from all walks of life, regardless of their race, gender, or social background. It is a negative force that erodes the foundation of our educational system and undermines the values of respect, empathy, inclusivity that we hold dear. While addressing bullying is a crucial task, it is equally important to consider the influence of ideological posters in our classroom. Our classrooms should be spaces where knowledge is imparted, critical thinking is nurtured, and personal growth is encouraged. However, the introduction of ideologies and political posters can inadvertently divide us and limit the open exchange of ideas. Instead, let us promote a neutral environment that fosters understanding, tolerance, and acceptance. Let us encourage dialogue that embraces different perspectives rather than pushing for a particular agenda. By focusing on anti-bullying initiatives, we can create an inclusive space where everyone feels safe, respected, and heard. This includes staff as well. Anti-bullying programs are not only about addressing physical and verbal abuse, they also encompass tackling emotional and cyberbullying. These programs raise awareness, educate us about the impact of bullying on mental health, and provide resources for those who need support. By prioritizing those efforts, we can create a culture of kindness and compassion, fostering an environment where every individual feels valued and supported and safe. While maintaining a healthy discourse is a vital, introducing certain ideologies and political posters in our classrooms can inadvertently polarize the atmosphere. Education should empower us to think critically and form our own opinions rather than imposing a singular viewpoint. Our goal should be to create an environment that encourages open minds, healthy debates, and respect for those diverse perspectives. In conclusion, let us prioritize anti-bullying initiatives that promote respect, empathy, inclusivity within our schools by focusing on creating a safe and nurturing environment for all. We can empower every individual to thrive academically, mentally, and emotionally. Together, let us stand against bullying and strive for harmonious educational experience that prepares us to be compassionate, understanding, and engaged members of society. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. I will make my comments quick as well. I had the opportunity to attend the 9/11 remembrance ceremony in the city of Cape Coral that was very moving. Was able to, wanted to thank principals at Hancock Creek Elementary, Norfolk Fort Myers Academy of Arts, Diplomat Elementary, and Diplomat Middle for their hospitality. And last but not least, Mr. Bauer would probably be upset if I didn't mention this, next week is the deadline for the Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program, so please go out and vote for your favorite teachers, make sure to go out to support them, and their website is lee school foundation dot org. Thank you. Now, Attorney DePree Bruno, do you have any comments?
Yes, I promised Mr. Maine's history class that I would give him a shout-out tonight. We had an opportunity, we were invited by AP Monica Yearley to go and discuss the Constitution, and the kids had a great time, they got to be each branch of government, and I think they may have learned a little bit of something as well, so I promised them that I would say hi, and thank you so much for inviting us.
Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Chairman, just, I made my comments earlier in the meeting today, and then I tried to address a little bit more length, some of the comments that were today, so certainly be happy to answer any additional questions any board members may have, but the only thing I just wanted to offer up was just thank you for recognizing the hardworking staff that are sitting, and they come to our meetings and they're immediately responding to a lot of those pieces, so just really appreciate you taking the time to acknowledge them in front of the rest of the meeting, they've been chugging right into action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next scheduled meeting is the board on Tuesday, October 8, there'll be a school board briefing at 12:30 p.m., followed by a school board action being 6 o'clock. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is hereby adjourned. The time is 7:10 p.m., and everyone have a great evening. Thank you.